So they'll get unofficial, but yeah, they can see anything that we have.
Okay, I know they don't really have the option to comment on previous minutes or whatever, so not being denied a chance to speak in that case.
Yeah.
I just, if that's listed on here, I'm just wondering how they would know.
If they ask for it, they will see it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Do we have any changes to the agenda? The regular agenda? The consent agenda, I'm sorry. I'm fine with my last one. Okay, come on in.
Basically, changes to these minutes, right?
Yeah, if there's any changes, we need to pull it off of the consent agenda and go over it so we can get the changes.
So if we have anything to change in the minute?
Yes.
For the mayor.
Make a motion to approve?
There's seconds?
Seven minutes.
On the favor?
Nine, eight, seven.
And then I need a motion to approve, that was, there are no additions to the change, there are no changes to the consent agenda. Now I need a motion to approve the items that were on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve items on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Seven.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Kayla, would you go grab that book for me, cover this something, please? Thank you. Next, we're going to public comment. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Items of a personal nature will not be discussed. Personnel-related matters shall be directed through the appropriate chain of command. Thank you. Please sign in prior to the meeting. Did everyone have a chance to sign in that wanted to? Okay. Um, next, council, neither council members nor town staff shall be expected to engage in discussions or debate with any speaker. Council may direct staff to follow up with certain matters. Please be aware that the Open Medias Act does not permit action to be taken on public comment at this meeting. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We understand sometimes three minutes is not quite enough, so we're, we're going to be kind of flexible on that to begin with, but we would like to limit to three minutes. So first is Jay.
Yes. Alright, excellent start to your first meeting, very calm.
In time for three minutes, I'll be quick. Twenty-four, twelve, one-on-one. CRS says that the oath you took must be taken, signed, administered, and filed before you can take office. Before the person enters upon the discharge of public office. When DeVita was removed, those cert, or those cards ended up sitting in there for a week or two. Therefore, everything that happened that weekend after may or may not be legal. I have questions on abuse of public official, or excuse me, abuse of public office, abuse of public records, accessory to crime, uh, conspiracy. I have everything from the CRSs and Cora, all that stuff here. There's been an ongoing breach of our security systems. I request that all of our syslogs from all the administration, our site administration be requested and published for everyone, going back five years. The minutes, every minute, set of minutes that I am in is missing from twenty-two and twenty-one. Uh, only reason that these even exist anymore is because I personally have a copy. I wonder why they're missing and why I'm missing from the agendas, and why in the minutes that are written, they are wildly incorrect and wildly misquote me. I have been asking for two years for this to be corrected, actually, close to three. I have put in a core request for all of your phone records, for all of the text messages between each other from April third till now. The reason for this, as you told me yourself, Ms. Carley, that you received eighty text messages, that's what forced you to, whatever that weekend was. I understand you felt you needed to do something. I need to know what it says about me, because I feel like I've been attacked a lot lately, and I've taken a lot for no good reason. I had nothing to do with anything y'all did that weekend, much less was I aware that anybody had breached anything. Two years ago, there was a security net on our, on our router to where nobody could log in. Someone from the inside has come through and has made that change. That means it has happened in the last two and a half years. Mayor Nate Dinsmore is here, former mayor, he can confirm this. That means somebody in this office, not likely one of the clerks, opened the back door. I will hope you will start talking to me. I've had a lot of information to bring you that could have been useful for you. I don't know why you're not communicating back with me. So, I have to do it here. As far as if there's any question on the text, this is established state law, has already been argued in court. One example would be Marshall v. Douglas County. There are several others. This is case law established, there is no question. It is public record. Whatever you've been texting back and forth, especially the day that the break-in or whatever is being called down occurred, that all needs to be public record. Not for my sake, but for everyone.
Is this all in writing? Can you just put this all in writing and submit it to Vicki and she will give it to you?
I've already given her the two core forms.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kim? You're on, you don't need to talk, you don't mind being asked. Ron, Sandy?
No.
Nope, okay. Karina?
No.
Pat Olson?
No.
No, you don't want to talk? Okay. William Chappelle?
No, good, thank you.
You're welcome. And Julie?
No, thank you.
Okay. That is everyone that is on the list for tonight. Okay. I will get with Vicki on Friday afternoon and go over this core request. Okay. Perfect. Old business. We have Patrick Mayer? Is he here? Oh!
Additions or changes to the not consent agenda with the regular agenda?
I don't have it on yet.
Mm-hmm, great.
Your best. We, we can.
So I have eleven C.
Okay.
And that's gonna be, um, Moreland hearing.
Carla, will you speak up, please?
I'm adding eleven C, which is Moreland hearing.
And I will tell you that when we make Vicki the interim clerk, that, that took the biggest job away from her.
Kayla, could you bring that microphone back to the tables, please?
We can discuss it, though?
Thank you, ma'am.
We, we, we need to.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, so, is Patrick here, Vicki?
He isn't, he wasn't able to make it. Um, I did, there should be.
Oh, is that this one?
Mm-hmm. It shows his transactions, um, notes that we made. Um, I know when I talked to him this afternoon, he, you know, would just like to see if he could get, um, he had disconnection fees on there, and he wanted to see if he could get that back.
That was the gentleman on auto pay, right?
He was on auto pay. Mm-hmm. What, what happened was, when he came in, um, his water was supposed to be shut off, because we had sent a, a letter out that Terry puts out saying you have until this period of time. Um, I guess he didn't get it, because he's one of the businesses, so I don't know that he's there like every day.
Okay.
Um, and somebody didn't give it to him. I know we had tested, um, the people and let them know also as another means to reach out to them, and, um, it would, we only had his partner's number, and so he didn't know anything about it. Um, it doesn't normally happen on a regular with him, so.
So.
And he was on auto pay, and since that portal isn't working, it stopped taking his payment out. And I know there's a couple people in town that have had that problem.
So was that the reason for the late fees, is because the auto pay quit working? Or was it something that we did?
No, I, I mean, I think that didn't help, because when he had it put on auto pay, it was never a problem.
Okay.
Um, but then we fell behind. I know that we had let him know the previous month that auto pay wasn't working, but he owns like a pretty big company, and so I'm sure he just forgot.
So how, so what, what exactly is he requesting? Is he requesting money back?
Yeah, the late fee being taken, or the disconnect fee being taken off.
And how much is it?
That was one-twenty-seven altogether, because he had trash. And he has.
Town or out of town?
He's on like the outskirts of town, but we still provide water.
Oh, okay.
Well, if I remember correctly from the conversation, and I had told him when we were at the counter that I could see what he was talking about, and the council would have to vote, but having spoken to him, that I would be voting in favor. And then afterwards, you informed me that you had sent a text message to the only number you had, which was the partner.
Mm-hmm.
And that this gentleman that came in complaining, the gentleman here, not the partner, but this gentleman, had come in the previous month and made the payment.
Right.
At the counter.
Yeah.
Um, and perhaps, this seems to be fairly senior in age, perhaps he forgotten this last time.
That's what I'm thinking.
The previous month, he had made a payment personally at the counter.
Yeah.
But you had sent a message to his partner, and I think that should have been sufficient. So I just wanted the council to be aware of that information as well.
And is he still a customer and good standing to him?
Yes, he did pay that as soon as, you know, he, Terry was out there to turn it off.
Okay.
Um, he did come in right away and pay it, and, I mean, he owns a, you know, he's a pretty good guy in the community. I, I know him personally. Um, he donated to the first responders and stuff back in twenty-two, when DeVita and Tony had put that on, so I know he does put a lot of money into the community.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any comments?
I, well, it seemed to me, from what I heard, he, where all the pay was not working, and we made every attempt to contact him to get him to pay the bill. Um, that's all we could do, I, I mean.
How late was he? I mean, was he just a couple days late, or was he like months late? Does it say?
No, it wasn't, we never let it get to months late. Um, he paid it on the first of April.
And is that the, the two-thirty-one?
No, the very bottom one, the one-oh-six-eighty.
Oh, it's hard to see.
Cause he still has the balance of one-twenty-seven on there. I told him that he could hold off on paying that, it wasn't like it was part of his, you know, water bill until I talked to you, guys about it, and, you know, so he'll pay it if you guys, you know, choose not to, but, um, he does still have that one-twenty-seven balance.
Did he update his phone number so we could get ahold of him?
He did, and I told him that I would call if his balance, cause we, we have notes that pop up. I told him I would give him a call personally if it happened, cause he said he would take care of it right away when I call him, if it should happen again. He's hoping once auto pay gets up, he won't have to worry about it.
So from one-twenty-seven down is his bill for this month, correct?
Um, that was the bill for the thirty-first that is due on the twenty-fifth of this month. If you look at the top, on the top right, the account balance, it says two-thirty-one oh-five.
Uh-huh.
Um, that's, like, he still owes the one-twenty-seven, but the difference, he owes this month.
Okay.
Still. It just, it shows up like that, because.
Is his water bill generally that much, that two-thirty-one?
No, that's carrying a balance.
Yeah, of one-twenty-seven.
Oh, so it's the one-thirty-one minus the one-twenty-seven?
Right. Mm-hmm.
You know, what do you guys think?
I think we've made all the honorable attempts to make contact, and I think he should talk to his partner about communicating.
My thought process is I would be talking to more like the clerk's stance, because day in and day out, clerks know who your good customers are, who are the customers you consistently have to try and badger for money. Who, like, we know who our people are, and Vicki is attesting that he's typically a good customer that pays his bill on the regular, and that I think that that should be part of the discussion as well.
And he does not have any problems, ever has he?
One time, but again, he was a new resident, well, his company, and he didn't realize that, you know, the payment was due on the twenty-fifth, but ever since then, and it's been maybe a year and a half. So, I haven't had any problems. I don't think it's like a, a money problem at all, I just think there's a lack of way home for him.
Okay, well, I need someone to make a motion of what we want to do.
Did Gary have anything else to say, of course, you looked like you did.
No.
My issue is not with his situation, but with everyone else.
Yeah, we don't want to set precedent.
Past this point. I, I've been through this, I, I've fought this issue for years, literally. And it's done me no good, but I'm not gonna stop. Everybody needs to be treated the same.
Absolutely.
If you show one privilege above the others, then you are a pressing of others, by the very nature of it. If you do for him, then you have to do for every other customer the same way. That's my opinion.
I agree. I think if Vicki reached out to the partner, and his partner didn't say nothing to him, that's... And if he updated his number, then next time, he's late, you know?
Next time, Kayla. Okay. Do you have a problem calling him, or do you want me to call him?
I mean, I can call him if he requests to talk to you, then I'll just.
Okay.
Do that, I'll make an appointment, I'll make a plan.
I'll make a motion not to waive the disconnectings, to keep it on.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And the next thing is he called company? Oh, I'm sorry, I got excited, because we did something. Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
You're supposed to.
So he can hear us, he just can't talk to us. Okay. Okay, Vicki, if you would explain about the Hinkle company to us?
Okay, um, DeVita had spoke with them, reached out to them a couple weeks, um, before the election, and, uh, he said he wanted a long-term relationship with doing audits for the town.
Okay.
Um, I said that, uh, well, DeVita was gonna talk to you guys about that, and so, um, I told him that you guys were interested, I had, you know, mentioned it to a couple of the board members. They said they wanted to talk about it more, so I brought the information that he had sent to the email. Um, and I did give him a call and let him know that you guys were interested in that, and that we would be, be getting back to them when the next meeting was completed.
Okay.
I didn't really get to look through the paperwork, so I don't know much about it or anything, I just printed out what he had sent.
I would really like to talk to this guy face-to-face, because I think you get a lot more out of him when you talk to him face-to-face.
Okay.
Because I.
Can he come before the board on a meeting? Cause sometimes we have that in order where they come during meetings.
Yeah, I can imagine.
We reach out and have them come to attend the meeting.
Yeah.
Look, next one, if possible. We've been trying to get this done for years.
As soon as possible.
It needs to happen.
I'm really not opposed to him being on Zoom, it's better if they're in person. I, I would like to meet these people in person.
I agree.
Is that angle worth, I don't know?
Not that far.
Two and a half hours.
People are willing to do something more.
Maybe we should try to do that on Zoom, if he's coming from that far away.
But if he wants, if he wants a five-year commitment to from us, I mean, it's really.
It might be more than that.
Yeah, it might even be more than that.
Because, so, just so everyone is aware, um, I was notified by Tara Marshall, who's with the Department of Local Affairs, um, that twelve thousand five hundred dollars that we were awarded, we will not get to be the recipient of that money until the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen audits that have exceptions on them are corrected. Apparently, um, whatever exceptions were done at that time were not done fully or correctly with the state. So as far as the state is concerned, twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen have not been completed all the way. And so they need to be rectified.
How many audits do we have as a Sugar City mayor? How many people are we paying to do an audit? You know that?
I don't think we're paying any to do an audit, I think we're paying a company to do bank reconciliation and reconciliation of books right now. It's, um.
As far as I'm aware, you don't have an auditor.
No.
Yeah. And I will tell you, I have talked to several of them, and nobody wants anything to do with them.
That's the problem, we've had all that wrong.
So we would have to approach, um, this company as well and tell them that twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteens have to be rectified with those exceptions.
And hopefully, that's not a whole lot of stuff.
Well, let's try to have that conversation, if we can get him to come down there face-to-face, rather than piece them together, and try to have a conversation and cover it all at once.
Yeah. I think, so if we could get him here, I think our meeting is supposed to be the first?
I think it is.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And even, well, we are gonna have a short work session before that, we could even have a work session for this. Just to kind of get a, a scope of what he wants to do, what his thoughts are. We could do it an hour earlier than we do. We're out here all night.
We need to get our minds on the same page, or something will go wrong.
Yeah, we need to get this done.
Thank you.
And just looking through this, I mean, these numbers are fantastic, but are these numbers going to be, once he finds out how much it is?
Well, according to his packet, he said that those fees are all-inclusive. Towards the bottom, our bid response is based on, um.
Four years?
Four years, and therefore they are discounting fees based on receiving all four years. So if they receive all four years, they are discounting it, and this will be the total cost. So if you commit to them long-term, they will give you that.
Give it out just now. Okay, if you could print out for the legislative.
I'll get them to call, yeah.
I'm gonna take this from you. Okay, let me go to, to the Moreland hearing. Once we approved.
Carla added C on.
That's, that's, that's number C, sorry, I didn't make myself clear. Once we approved Vicki as our town clerk, that, that nullified DeVita's job. Vicki is now our interim town clerk, and DeVita's job is over. We don't legally have to offer her a hearing, and so we didn't.
I would counter with, on April third, when she was put on administrative leave, she was not put on administrative leave by correct authorities, so that needs to be researched a lot better, because if she's on a wrongful paid leave, then it didn't happen at all, and you haven't put her on a paid leave at all. So that needs to be clarified. I'm not saying that you have to, like, do it, but we really need to be very crystal clear on that, because the law will not be kind.
I will call my lawyer again tomorrow, and I will have him crystal, crystal clear it, and then I will bring that back to you guys on the first. But as for now, Vicki is our clerk, and Kayla is for assistance.
I still have a problem with that. DeVita was publicly placed on administrative leave and issued twelve charges of things that she allegedly did wrong. We've been waiting for this hearing, she has a right to face her accusers, she has a right to a quick and speedy trial. Nothing has been put out, given her an opportunity to speak against the charges that were placed on her. So she's in limbo, she's on hold, she's just dangling out there, while the gossip and the rumors continue to swirl unabated, and she's had no opportunity to respond.
And I will check with my lawyer tomorrow and see what we need to do. But as of tonight, as far as I'm concerned, she is, she is no longer employed with the town of Sugar City, and she's, she's not employed until I get further notice, until something happens. And if she has a lawyer, her lawyer can fight it out.
I would make a suggestion in the reverse, since I believe there's legitimate questions about all of this. I think it is incorrect to say that she's now unemployed until we decide different. I think the correct answer.
Technically, I am the mayor, technically, I am the mayor, and I don't have to give her a hearing, and I could have fired her on my own that night. If you would like to take a vote right now, I would be willing to take a vote. We could do whatever we want, but as of right now, she is unemployed from the town of Sugar City.
I submit that as she was an officer, not a member, as a trustee, but as the clerk, she required adequate advanced noticing that she was gonna be attacked and have that done, and she didn't get that. Whether you were the mayor at that time or not, that was not done correctly, and I think it is a big mistake to just declare that she's been fired instead of somebody who decides otherwise.
Well, then I will take, then I will take that.
That's a big mistake.
Well.
I think, I think a lot of people don't understand my thought process personally, because I've been accused of taking sides, and I don't understand this taking side bit. I am error on the side of the law, and in law land, you have to afford her, because you don't implement law, you know, federal law, state law, you have to afford her the hearing.
I do not have to even afford her the hearing.
You do, because you publicly acknowledged she would get a hearing. By publicly acknowledging.
Realistically?
Naked.
If it was me, I would play by the rules, and I believe the rules say that she has the right to a, to a hearing. And, and it takes away some of her rights to sue you.
It does, that's what I'm trying to get at, is it's taking away some of the liability.
And you might be right, cause I honestly don't know, because I've always taken the other road. And one thing you wanna do is to try to keep Sugar City out of a whole bunch of lawsuits going on, because you wanna be right. And I don't care to be sued over it.
Nate, who are you gonna say, Nate?
So, this is a cross line between the moral obligation to try to abide both parties and what the law actually dictates. What the law dictates is that she's not actually an elected official, the thirty-one-four-three-oh-seven does not actually directly apply to her. Since you are the mayor, you do have the position to terminate her at your own will. This is a decision that's gonna be up to you and how you move forward, and that's, that is. You are in the right, but they are also in the right for grandstanding. If you believe that she is taking actions or doing something that is putting the town itself in jeopardy more than what you would risk removing her from that situation, then that's the decision you need to make.
So what, to clarify a little bit more on the back end of that, is that currently she has a golden parachute clause in a contract that was granted with the old board, so.
That was voted on in executive session.
Yes.
And you cannot vote in the.
It wasn't voted, it was discussed in executive session, and after that executive session, it was voted on in open session.
So, so does that mean, so that there's a, there's a contract of employment between the two parties?
Correct. Which changes everything, that's where I'm going, is that, with that contract, but with that contract, because of how it was done, that contract still. that contract solidified that if you don't terminate based on due cause and you have to produce evidence of due cause, that she then gets three years of her salary on behalf of the town. So we're basically paying for three years of a clerk that is essentially not doing any.
That was discussed at an executive session and then voted in the open session.
Well, and I would like to say thank you to the last board for doing that and not allowing the new board to know that until tonight.
We were afraid that the new board was gonna start with a flaming chainsaw. It's exactly what happened.
Yes, Nate?
Uh, to give, I guess, a little disclaimer direction, you, you kinda hit it right on the head. Consulting some legal advice for the town of Sugar City would be the best approach, whether it be through your judge, which I know is currently at the town right now and out of country, or it's through whichever legal representation you guys are gonna choose. That would be the best approach honestly to choose.
I will do that tomorrow morning. So let's table.
Could we ask the old, um, trustees why they went for the contract personally?
I just said, we were concerned the new board was starting with a flaming chainsaw. Instead of settling in and figuring out how things go, they just throw a hand grenade in the office which is basically exactly what happened.
What would be that flaming chainsaw for you?
What happened on Monday night?
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay, we're done. We're done. We are going to table this. I want to table this until I can see further legal advice tomorrow. We will take this back up on Monday. Vicki, if you could add this to old business.
Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, Wednesday. Not Monday, Wednesday.
No, hang on.
So table to May one.
Table to May one. And we're going to move to new business ADA compliant. I know that Scarlett has done a lot of work in Ordway with ADA compliant. Vicki, do you have anything?
Uh, not really. We had put in for a grant, uh, for that.
Sipper grant?
Yeah, and we actually, from the common look suite.
So for, for everyone to know, um, there have been some state laws that have been passed. Passed actually in twenty twenty-two, um, but local municipalities didn't really know of this. Um, so it wasn't just Sugar City. It was affected. It was a lot of local municipalities didn't even know that this law had passed. Um, it's basically calling everyone to have their websites up to ADA standards so that if, um, someone that has to have the text read to them, so all PDF files, any files that don't have text to read would be non-compliant and therefore, um, like what happened with the Matt Rome thing we, we experienced earlier would happen again only through ADA laws. So they passed two laws. It's House Bill eleven twenty and then there's another one. I don't remember the citation off the top of my head, um, that said that we have until July one of twenty twenty-four, um, to be, um, to have a plan for ADA accessibility and to, um, have all old documentation, um, up to code. Um, because of the problem that a lot of municipalities were bringing to, um, the state level, saying that we, it's not affordable. We can't do that. It's too mu- too small of a timeframe. Um, SIPA, um, is a grant that's afforded to municipalities and they, they built a specific grant for ADA compliance in which, um, they contracted with a company called Alliant. And Alliant, um, for one year does all of our, um, ADA compliance, brings all of our documents up to speed and gets us at least working towards complacency because even though the law says July one of twenty twenty-four, it's a hard deadline, there was a law passed shortly after that that gives a grace period of one year that, um, municipalities cannot be, um, sought after legally for non-compliance. So they have actually one more year to get into compliance. So Alliant, um, Sugar City was awarded it and so was Ordway. Um, that Alliant will be working with the town clerks, so Vicki will have a lot of classes coming up, um, as will I, to get all of our stuff up to date, but we were awarded the full package. And that was roughly around ten thousand dollars that we were awarded with that partnership. So for the next year, we'll be working with Alliant to get everything up to date.
So I have a question. Will they go in and completely change her website? Cause that's kind of what SIPA did the last time they gave a grant for website. Well, was it in Ordway?
They.
And they're gonna change it.
They will work with us, but they are not doing the work.
Okay. But they will guide us and make sure everything is the way it's supposed to be.
But they will not be doing the work.
You're still held to the, uh, July first date, correct?
We are held to it, but nobody can sue for it or seek legal action for another year.
Okay.
Do we get the grant without the Alliant?
Yes.
Grant is separate.
This is a law that passed, so they'll give us this grant.
Those fines start at thirty-five hundred.
Correct.
So, and they have already contacted you? They already contacted you? Yes?
Yeah, um, I put all the emails there that they have given. They said that we had thirty days and it's coming up real fast, so we have to go on, make an account under that program and get started. Or if we don't, it will.
Okay.
Go back to somebody else.
So let's go ahead and, and I think we should go, do we need a vote? Do we need a motion and vote on it?
We might as well. I'm making a motion for her to go ahead and begin the process, so.
Especially if they're gonna pay ten thousand dollars of it, I say.
Well, and, um, I don't know where Sugar City's computers are, but if you don't, you will have to purchase, um, Adobe Acrobat Pro. So it can't be the basic version. It has to be the pro version. And that's roughly two hundred dollars, something like that.
Pro?
Mm-hmm. And it has to be installed on all computers here. So whoever applied for that should have applied for multiple licenses because each computer has their own license.
And will this, it'll take, it'll do everything, like, you know?
They will walk, uh, they will walk Vicki and I through how to get us compliant, yes.
Okay. Okay, I entertain a motion to go ahead and accept this if we're good with it.
I'll, I'll make the motion for Vicki to go ahead and make the law and everything, so the process is, you know?
I'll second that.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now go assist. Is that part of this too? Or go assist, I'm sorry.
Um, no, that, I'm not even sure. Look, I was just looking at that. Um, I think that was just something, it's a new municipal software. I was just looking at it now and I was like, oh, that should have probably got in there.
No, this isn't part of it.
Oh, yeah, cause it's Central Square.
Mm-hmm.
And they still have not sent me that paperwork to sign to get our bill paid up and ready.
Okay, I will give them a call and.
I will email her again tomorrow.
Okay, great.
So, okay. So let's get that. The next thing we have is the trash truck repairs from Rush Truck Center. Steven was so excited today when he called me.
Mm-hmm.
Cause he got the bill from like thirty-five hundred dollars down to twenty-seven ninety-nine.
Like that?
Yes, indeed.
Yes. He was extremely excited.
It, it was because of an error on their part in the first place. We took it up there to get it fixed. They did not fix it properly and then had to come down here to actually.
And it was the deficit line?
Yes, the pump strings was plugged up and, and so.
He says it's on the road and working.
It is, it is. But while we're on that subject, um, Truck Seven, their backup is wore out. It's functioning, but it's not long for this world. Um, Five is a much better truck, but it needs either a cylinder liner and injectors and probably rings and the motor that's in it, or maybe a used motor put in. Um, it's plugging up, uh, DPF in like two weeks. The injector's just hung wide open, washed down the cylinder. Uh, we got a bid to repair it. Uh, maybe one is right at thirty-two thousand. Right at thirty thousand, one can get a used motor and pay somebody to put it in, so.
Okay.
That's something y'all might want to think about between.
Do you have that bid or did you have that bid?
Uh, Steven should have it. They should have a copy in the office.
I'll go for it.
Because we wait.
Truck Five.
Hi.
Yes.
So we have.
We're up in.
Our upper line.
I thought you said Truck Seven.
Seven is the one we're using as a backup, but Seven is very old. The box is rusting out. Uh, the, the whole truck, it is just wore out. Um, we put new brakes on it, made it safe, but it's not gonna run long. Um, it, it already sounds awful and, um, it, it's gonna come sooner rather than later that i- it's not worth putting any more money into it. Five is a much better truck though, so.
So how many trucks, complete trucks do we have that we can run if we have to?
Complete trucks, right now we have three, two large ones and one small. But Seven, like I said, is wore out. I mean, pretty much ever, ever league or so, we have to put something else into it. It's little stuff for the most part, but, uh, we just had to have the whole end of the bed welded back on and fixed. It, it's, it's not long for this world.
Okay.
If we had a good mechanic, Truck Five and Truck Six are almost the same and could probably be got up and running pretty cost effectively, but at a hundred and fifty bucks an hour, it's not a, a viable solution, um.
Okay.
So.
So we need to put our heads together and figure out what we're gonna do.
I believe we had somebody come in today asking about a job that had a CDL and what they did on the planet, um.
He took an application. He's officially dropping it off, so. He has a lot of the equipment, you know, just for putting tires on and stuff. He was talking to me about it, so. We could just buy the tires. He could mount them, things like that, so.
He could do engine work as well?
That's what he said.
I didn't speak with him personally, so I, I can't say.
He works on semis.
But, uh, you know.
So, and for a little while, and then he got into CDL and stuff, so.
Is good to have in your back pocket?
Absolutely. Uh, we spend way too much on the mechanic at, at the shop. Um, if we keep three trucks on the road, it's pretty much a full year's salary for somebody, easily in repair bills over here. I think if we had somebody on duty all the time, they'd be in a lot better shape as a rule and we'd come out cheaper in the long run.
Do we do preventive maintenance on these trucks?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
They're all scheduled, um, perhaps, uh, you could stop by and ask Steven, but he's got scheduled when they get them and, and everything, so.
He's logging all of it, just as I asked you.
There's, there's maintenance records and all of that out there.
Heard of that.
Okay, so I'm completely happy with this three hundred dollar thing, so. So if you'll just put that in the favor for Friday, Vicki?
Okay.
So I just have a random side question.
Okay.
Um, I don't know how this came about, but is Vicki going to just do what like other municipalities do where she presents just a total amount of bills at this point? Or are we still doing the breakdown of each bill that we have to vote on? Like, are we gonna condense this down a little bit? What, what is our plan?
I think we need to muddle through the first pile first and see which is gonna be better cause the pile is getting quite large. So Friday, um, Donnie is gonna come in and help us. And like I say, I've got Karen on speed dial.
My Karen or Karen G?
Karen Gates.
Oh, they're both Karen G.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and we're going to muddle through and then we'll see how it, how it breaks out. And I mean, we kinda know the difference between what's trash. I mean, obviously this is trash, you know, and we can figure that out, but some of the things, I'm gonna have to go back in the system to see how they broke out, so.
Karen did offer that, um, and the mayor with his blessing did offer that if we need to have Karen go through like Cassell and figure out how to get, um, the trash as a line item and have their own enterprise fund like they're supposed to, that she can help differentiate that.
Absolutely. I will call her Friday afternoon.
So I don't know when she's gonna do that, but she did offer that.
Supposed to have been done for a long time, but it needs, it's a count separated.
Yes.
Not just the line items and the billing software. I know it looks a little confusing when you look at it to see what's going on there, but that money needs to be transferred properly when the town uses it. And if it just goes directly into the general account.
We just use it.
We just use it and it never happens and then you wind up with eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and you know.
And you have.
We've been discussing that since I came on the council in October twenty-two.
I have been playing my head against the wall for a long time on that.
And I, I agree.
The accounts needs separated.
You know, at one point, I think when Toby and I and Archie Ehar did it, the trash was completely over here. Trash and municipality had nothing.
By law, it has to be.
By, they had nothing to do with each other. And we had it all straightened out and everything was where it was supposed to be and how it all got muddled all back together, I don't know. I don't know who and we're not gonna point because it's done. It just needs to be fixed.
Yep.
So maybe with Jerry's blessing, Karen and Donnie and I and Scarlett and all of us can get together and get that fixed because we really need a trash business and a municipality.
Well, it, it would be real nice for the residents to see where that money really is. Because I hear a lot that people think the town is supporting the trash company and that it's not the case at all. It's the furthest thing from the truth.
Mm-hmm.
But as long as those books look so muddy when anybody tries to go through it, and if it takes me an hour and a half of going over it when I know the numbers to actually ferret out what's there, that we'll get tired of it.
Yeah, and you just give up because you can't figure out what goes where. So that, that is on the list of things to do is to get those separated back out because we can't have that system in with our municipality.
As it stands, we're gonna need a bunch of resolutions to fix our budget in the past year because that money was not transferred properly. And when they do these audits, it's not gonna show up because.
Cause there's nothing there.
Not. The resolutions were not there to move that money into the general one and so.
Well, the numbers will be there.
Well, the numbers.
The number of theirs is just supporting that.
We just have to figure out where the money went and why it went there, so. Okay. So under new business, we can move to old business, trash truck bids and. I know, but we're gonna look at the bids for fixing the other one. So we're gonna move that to old business for next time.
Thank you. I was misunderstanding what you were doing.
Sorry. And then the phone system. I will tell you, I was in here last Friday and if I had to answer the phone here, I would quit. I would tell you guys, I am not working here anymore.
Legit.
The phones are horrible in this building.
Yo.
Legit.
They are horrible. They ring. You're talking to somebody. You can hear the other line on that line. They're, they hang up on you. They're, they are hor- I don't know how these two girls do it because they are horrible.
Patience.
Patience. I have none and I had none.
I'm surprised I have none, so.
It was horrible and it doesn't ring to voicemail. If you're both on the phone, it should ring to voicemail. It doesn't. It just keeps ringing and you can't answer it because you're both on the phone. It's, ask Cody. It's horrible. I was ready to just cry. It was awful. So anyway, Vicki?
So, um, I have whole packets, but I ran out of time to get every single one of you guys the things. So, I mean, you can look at them, but, um, there's a couple that I put in there. I, I'm not sure what's the best, honestly. Like I said, I think.
Are our phones CCOM phones?
Yes.
And they're that bad?
Yes.
Mine in the house works fine. I, I don't have none of those that you.
Cause we have CCOM phones and they do exactly what we want them to do. They go voicemail. They do whatever we want them to.
We have CCOM as well and I'm wondering, do you guys have VoIP?
I don't know.
Like, that's a question more for CCOM, but we need to kind of figure out what do we have with CCOM? Is it VoIP? Um, do they have the ability to get us into?
Yeah.
Because Ordway, Ordway has the same thing. It's three rings and then it goes to voicemail because we're either with a customer or we're, we're doing something.
Maybe we've got that VoIP that's like an old version that needs updating.
Maybe they just need to come. Aren't they getting, aren't they getting? Maybe they just need to come, aren't they getting, aren't they getting our phones for free for letting them put the? Nate, I think this happened when you were the mayor.
Free phones, three in the bell chute.
Free phones and internet, because we let CCOM put their thing on top of our tower?
Yes, that's one of the things, Sugar City directly shouldn't be having to play for an internet or something else bill, because we allow them to reach service to the rest of the town.
Well, then they need to come fix our phones, 'cause they're horrible. Could you put in a call to them tomorrow, please?
Mm-hmm.
And tell them to come fix the garbage.
Sure.
Mr. Ginsmore is here, would now be a good time to discuss the access to the video that's available and he knows about.
Maybe at a better time.
Yeah, Nate, Nate's shaking.
If you guys have time for that later on, let you guys get through it again right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Vicky's going to put a call into them, 'cause if we're, I mean, I know it's free, but come on.
Free needs to work.
Free needs to work, exactly. Um, do you have anything else, Vicky? I'm sorry, your clerk's report is next, I'm sorry.
Yeah, not on that, and honestly with my clerk's report, there's a lot of stuff that you guys can just look over. We don't have to discuss it, I just, it came in the email and I just wanted you guys to have it. Um.
Is it this packet?
Yes, I tried to separate it so everybody can follow along, um. The, Kayla took a call from the guy that cleans the sewers once a year, he does different sections of the town. I remember from last year, he said he would bring the map out in three weeks to discuss what section you guys wanna take care of this year. He gives a whole book and everything once he's done and that sort of thing, so, um, I don't know.
So he'll be here in three weeks?
Yes, so what we can do, is he supposed to call before he comes?
Yeah, he said his guys will be down in the area, um, like three weeks from now, and they'll give us a call to set everything up.
Okay, is he from Lyman?
Yes, Simon's from Lyman, yeah.
I don't remember that, no, but we can call, you know, if, if they just stop in.
Lady, you got a question?
I never see him on my side in town, I'll come on the west side, I never see him on my side getting here.
I don't know, but we will definitely.
I'll see him over here, but not on the west side of town.
We will definitely ask that question when he comes.
Yeah, I know that I'm hearing one section. It's not all out.
I think, yeah, he does like one section, so I think he rotates and then goes back around, like tries to, yeah.
So, yeah, if he's not got that side of town, maybe he needs to look back, I don't, we'll discuss it, see what his map says.
Yeah, he said he would discuss it with us, so.
Okay, and what I could do, I don't, I know, you know, Scott and Eric both, um, are usually around. If they just stop in, I can give one of them or both of them a call, and then they could talk to them, that way they don't miss him or anything.
Yeah, sure. Okay, perfect, um.
One thing I did, um, you asked me to reach out to Sersa and give him, uh, that paperwork from last week.
Yes.
I did that, and that's in the paperwork, um, we deal with Francesca on that.
Okay.
And so he forwarded it to her, and the paperwork's in here.
And I will let you know it's a lawsuit pertaining to the wreck, the fatality that Fernanda had. And so Francesca has been handling it, so Vicky has sent the paperwork to them and they will handle it from this point forward. They need something, they'll call us.
And then, um, I talked to Sam Light, uh, at Sersa. He had set up something for the first of May, uh, with Davidah, um, but he wanted to give it a little bit of time in case if you guys had questions, being in a little bit, so he set it up for May twenty-ninth, which is a Wednesday, it's right before our meeting, I believe, or, I think so. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, is it, okay, um, so at six o'clock.
We have three meetings in May?
No, we have an off week.
Okay.
Oh, okay, it's an off week then, okay, that's what I was thinking when I looked at the date.
I was like, oh my god.
He said it should only take about an hour unless if people have a lot of questions, it might take a little bit longer, but.
And this would be the training that you ask the hard questions, 'cause he's been with C N L for forty years or something. He's their head of their legal department, he's the one that you need to ask the hard questions, so.
And on here, it does say like Open Records Act, open meetings, things like that, I highlighted it down there a little bit on the bottom of his email, so you guys could see what he would, questions he has.
Okay.
Um, new error called today, and they wanna know if we wanna sponsor any seniors. I'm thinking for graduation, I'm not really sure, he said it's ten dollars per senior.
Who called you?
John Love, John Love, yeah, he called us.
Do we have any seniors here in Sugar City?
Oh, what about, yeah, Joey's, um.
He's a senior?
He's a sophomore.
Is he a sophomore?
Um, one of the McNeil boys is a senior.
And then, um, Miss Yvonne's daughter is, is she? She's not in, I think she's in Crowley anymore.
No, she goes to Crowley, but she's.
She goes to Crowley.
She might be online, I'm not sure. I would say that if we do sponsor, we only wanna sponsor Sugar, I mean, not, not just Sugar City kids, but like surrounding. We wanna sponsor the kids at this end of County, 'cause they're our kids, they're all our kids, but they're our kids? That's not sounding right. It's sounding horrible, the more we're talking, the worse it's sounding.
Your kids from Arkenee.
There you go, thank you.
Emma Paycheck would be one of our county kids.
Oh, yes, Emma, and she's Sam Wilson's granddaughter, so, she's.
What's that, about thirty bucks, so ten bucks per kid?
Yeah, and if we do not have the money to fund it, I will pitch in and help fund that.
I will pitch in too.
Okay, so about three we have?
If you could figure out kind of how many, you know, and John might know, he might have a list of.
Okay.
We'd go through them, if he'll just give us the list, we can go through and tell you who's from here and who's not.
Right.
You know, but like I say.
I'll find out more information on it.
I know one of the boys is a senior, and she said Emma's a senior.
Emma's a senior, um, Elijah and McNeil is a senior.
Yeah.
There's Andra, Beth's daughter.
Oh, that's right.
She is online, but she will be graduating with the rest.
Oh, she's gonna graduate from Crowley?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll get a list from him, I think that's a good idea.
We'll figure it out.
Yes, and when is that due by?
Um, he did not say, but I know the end of school's coming up, so we can.
They usually do it like the first week and week, they do the whole, all right, I'll check, I'll get with him.
Last year, we, last year, we didn't get billed for it until June, I wanna say, is when we got actually billed for it.
Okay.
All right.
And then, um, there was also, I forgot to say, with the Sersa, um, an acknowledgement that they got it from us or something.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I think the rest of it you guys can kinda just look through. Um, we did have something though for the firefighters, uh, night, or light the night for fallen firefighters. Um, I'm not sure, I didn't really get to look into it, but, um, it's, um, Memorial Weekend, May fourth and fifth.
Yes.
So, and I will make sure that I call Janet and get her that, so she can check it out.
If you would do that, and then tell her to get back to us immediately.
Okay, and then that's pretty much it, I believe, for me.
Did we abstain from the family leave?
Yes.
Like we should have?
Yes.
Thank you, because. Municipality.
It won't kill, it's not for both of us.
No, it's not. It's not killing. Okay. Yeah, Janet will get back to us on that, so. Does it say when this is?
Um, it was saying like May fourth to the fifth.
Yeah.
I know it's saying the first to the fifth, but the prominent day of the fourth and the fifth, I was reading it, so.
Okay. Awesome. Do we need to be in this, um, stakeholders meeting, does anybody know? Public Health and Environment? Sort of slide material notification stakeholders meeting?
No, it's today.
Oh, well, it was today, we missed it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay, we weren't there.
No.
We'll circle back, yeah. I think that's it. Okay, so that's all of the issue report, do you have anything else?
No.
All right. Let me go on, you're first.
Can I go last?
Yeah, if you would like, we'll start this, I guarantee you're first. Go ahead, Scarlett.
Sorry, here.
So what are we gonna do about our security breach, a serious issue, uh?
I don't think that was a security breach, because I did, so I will take full responsibility for that.
Okay.
I mean, I, I sent them in here too.
But you did not have the authority to do that.
Well, I thought I did.
And even if you did, you turned off the security system in the municipal building while the boats were setting in.
Well, first of all, the boats were not where they were supposed to be.
After the fact.
No, I have a picture, they were sitting in an office where they should have been, but that's beside the point. The internet was unplugged and the outside was unplugged, the cameras in here were still running.
The D V R was unplugged, so.
When the, when the ethernet was unplugged, it, um, also made the D V R go down, is what, um, Triad was saying. Yeah, like, there is no video saved from two weeks until, uh, about the nineteenth, when I had called Josh to help us set it back up. There was no videos there.
So from the time it was unplugged during that weekend breach until Triad got brought into the picture the other day, there's been no video recorded of anything that happened.
None at all?
Correct, apparently.
I mean, none that I can access.
I understand, it's not your fault.
No, no, I'm not saying, I just, I can't access it, when Triad came in, they were able to access those videos somehow, but I don't know how he did it. And I wasn't.
There's a possibility that the D V R had enough space on it that there was still some video there. Triad has been trying to access it because only they can, and we don't know yet whether, how successful they've been.
When the tech was here and he was on the website, the videos were there, but, um, going in, like separately from when they weren't here, those videos are not there, so I don't know how he accessed it, I didn't sit over his shoulder, I was doing my own thing, I let him do what he had to do. But he accessed those videos and I had gone in to see, and they're not there on the website when I looked, it was only the two days. I don't know how he pulled up the month, but.
It sounds like he may have, like, there may be a cloud or an alternate storage that they have on their end.
Maybe, I mean, he accessed it through the website that we have, so I'm just not sure, 'cause like I said, I wasn't sitting over his shoulder watching, so.
Well, I do believe that we need to can our system and start again, I mean, the system is.
Yeah, he had, he had come in because we were having some problems on the computer. Um, and he found where on our server, in a government building, they take access off so outside, uh, sources can't access it, it was actually put back on, and so he was concerned.
And, um, he had, Josh had said a couple years ago that, um, he had spoken to Davidah, and it was in his notes that they had closed the access to the router, and he didn't know how, he didn't know who did it, the router was open to public access, so anybody could remote in anytime.
But he killed that actual. So explain to me what the differences between I T and who's doing our actual cameras? Because I thought one sync, any sync or someone's sync.
HomeSync does your security system, like your keypads and.
Like the cameras, like those.
Okay.
They don't do the cameras, the cameras are run through Triad.
Why aren't we doing an all-in-one system?
It used to be a race, as far as I knew, but I don't know what company that we go through now, it was switched a couple of years.
And actually, HomeSync has changed.
Hold on, Mr. Ring's in his hand.
Perfect, um, if this is gonna be the same security system that was put in effect when I was office, I guess, I guess I have two immediate questions. One, why was the contract broke with the company for storage of our data up to six months? So when we went with that security company, we're required to hold all video footage for up to a certain amount of time. Uh, as I've been informed, that, that was canceled out, and I don't believe they're backlogging as far as they used to. What she's referring to, when the gentleman probably came here, is that they do have a cloud network up there at the place. I actually am pretty sure the cameras and security are the same people, are they not?
I'm not sure, I don't even.
Pretty sure they are, I think, so anyway, they, they, they do have to store some information out there on our end. They can't get it if something disconnected on our, on our end, though. So, um, I don't know exactly what videos we're looking at, there, there could be spaces there and it could be lined up, but if something's unplugged on our end, they won't have it on their end, regardless, just because, but they. They should, and they should have literally storage space for us, right, believe, what's our, what is it, nine months, or not, not nine months, six months, ninety days? What's the requirement for municipalities to store information, whatever that is, is what we.
Hand me on what you're storing, I can safely say that.
Yeah, for, for any things like core requests, like you're required to hold all public information for X amount of time. Our contract with that company was for them to hold that s- data storage for that amount of time, just 'cause it made it simple.
Well, I know that there were some core requests for stuff from twenty-one, twenty-two, and, and we don't have it, I mean, we.
Yeah, not like any of the meetings on, like, an audio recording.
No minutes?
I mean, they're written minutes.
They're written minutes.
They're written minutes.
Well, that's what I thought was said, that right in here, that every seven days it's recorded over. That's what was said.
That's the security cameras, what we were told, but apparently they can go in and get them, we can't, but they can.
I know that, uh, Josh had told me that there was at least two terabytes of storage on the D V R, so it was probably saving lo- like camera logs over old ones, and, um, I know that when he had, the tech had come in and gone through, um, he was saying that I can't even remember at this point, but it was, there was, most of the, the footage was there, but like, um, I know on the eleventh or something, um, the home sync alarm went off, and like, it said contact six, but he had gone back in the cameras and there was no reason why the alarm went off, so we're not sure. But there was no footage, that's.
Yeah, he couldn't.
Like, there was nothing there.
Find any footage on that.
There was no, like, the footage was there, but you didn't see anybody, so when the time the alarm went off, there was nobody there.
Was that the night that we accidentally set the alarm off?
When the senior citizens came up?
You know what, the senior citizens were there that night.
Yeah, at that moment.
And he felt that maybe somebody tricked it.
It took about that long to get COVID, but.
What night was that?
But that would explain that.
It was a Thursday.
It was a Thursday, yes, it was.
It said it was the eleventh.
That would have been the eleventh, like, that was.
Yeah, it was like before we came back.
Yeah, on the twelfth. Cause we were posting something on the door, and we opened the door and posted it, and they were like, uh-oh.
Yeah, and it was like a four-minute period?
Yeah, it was like a four-minute period to figure out how to, how to fix it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we cleared the building, so we've figured it all out.
How do we fix it from here?
Forward.
On, that's the question.
Uh, he, he, uh, actually plugged in what we needed, and he got it fixed.
So is everything being saved, I just wanna know that everything is being saved to a cloud or somewhere else.
He told me that, I mean, even though that I can't access like the videos on the website myself, he said that when the time that the D V R was unplugged, that it was still recording. It's just for some reason, we can't access those, like, us ourselves can't access. But then Josh was also saying that there should be an admin, other than the, just our Sugar City, but there should be an admin, but we don't have like the password for that, and there should be, but there's not. He's not why, he's not sure why.
Yes.
Somebody had the admin password.
Yeah, we're gonna have to come and have them just look at it and get it all straightened out.
Have them write it out so that we know exactly what we need to do from this point forward.
Change the code on the path, on the key thing.
Yeah, change all of the, cause.
Yeah, that's gonna have to be changed.
And that way it's secure from this point forward, 'cause I think you are the only one with code now.
I think I am.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Don't tell us all.
Yeah, we're gonna hold you, please be careful driving home.
I know, right? Just saying.
So that's what we'll do, we will, if you could, sometime, since you have nothing else to do, if you could call him and ask him if they could please write out everything from beginning to end, that way we can understand exactly how it works, what needs to happen, and how we need to secure it from this point forward, and then maybe we'll meet with him one night.
Okay.
And that way he can, he can all get on the same page.
Okay.
Okay?
Anything else?
No, I'm not really, I think on the truck, um, like I said, we need to get that thing, or eight truck back up and running. Seven is not a viable backup for long, it's, it's just wore out.
We should get that guy and see what he can do, however you have a mechanic.
Uh, um, already kind of got approved by the previous board to hire one, but we've never had a real candidate. So it's.
Most of them work for somebody else.
Exactly.
Yeah, if he will bring his, his, um, application back, we can get him on the agenda for next week.
Of course.
Okay.
Or his.
If he's available.
Well, um, as to that, um, it is Stephen's responsibility to hire and fire crash employees, not this board. Um, we've been told repeatedly by our attorneys, there's liability involved in that, now, um.
That we should not, or we should?
That we should not be involved in at all. That's why.
He's a supervisor, so why is he a employee?
Well.
Yes, but we don't feel directly with the other employees, but our supervisor, that limits our liability. If, if something comes up, then both our supervisor is the one who gives that, or who hires them, who fires them. Um, so while I'm, I, I'm all for interviewing them and everything, I still.
Think Stephen should do that.
Yeah, let's, let's ask Stephen for sure. In fact, I'll ask him, Brian, what he thinks. I would like to, 'cause, you know, I would kinda like to talk to this guy first, because.
I absolutely understand, and, um, I, it, it's been Stephen's habit to bring him in, but, um, in the long run, per our advice from our attorneys, it's been his choice to hire and fire his employees for a while.
And I understand that, like I say, I, you know, we have a lot of.
Now, there might be a little leeway, because it would be a mechanic and maybe a part-time driver, um, so it might fall under a different category.
And also, if he's a mechanic, he could work on our city stuff too, so that would be where we can
Well, yeah.
Say that, you know, we need to talk to him too. That way we have him work on our stuff too.
Work on more than trash trucks.
More than just trash trucks. Okay, so.
That would be nice.
Okay.
Cindy, I'm not sure that's correct. I would check with a couple of attorneys and make sure that's the way.
I believe that would be referred to as a city management form of city government, which we don't want.
That's exactly what I'm.
Okay.
Nothing else? Okay, Brian?
Okay, we've already discussed three key in the building, two dual alarm codes. Uh, I got a couple of final things. I'm gonna try to be polite, emphasis on try. I guess I'll just shorten it up by saying, when we were discussing Davida's hearing, you can roll your eyes if you want. It's a valid point. You get your turn in a minute. When we were discussing Davida's hearing, Adam Mayor, you immediately said, because we have, instantly said, because we have installed Vicki as the interim clerk, then Davida doesn't get a hearing. And I'm interested to know why that wasn't disclosed at the time that we were voting to make Vicki the interim mayor, because that point seems to be oddly missing from that conversation. And in the interest of being polite, I'll let that go from there. Cody?
Um, I'm pretty much where I got is, uh, the locksmith who came to open the ballot box. Uh, he said he could rekey our locks for us. It would be thirty dollars a lock, sixty dollars for a service fee, and three dollars for a key. Hey, we are gonna get billed for him coming to open the ballot box and all that. He hasn't sent me the email yet. Um, I could contact him and see where that's at. And then also, I could get a, a quote on what it all costs, and we need to know which doors we need to have locked.
I, I would also propose that maybe have a limitation on how many keys are accessible, and who has the keys, and they need to sign them out. There needs to be some more protections around keys.
Yes, and I also asked him, he said he can number them, write any number on there.
That we.
That could be in the office, as the paper stating zero, zero, four, blah, so and so. So that's one thing. Another thing is just a statement, um. Us as a table, we all need to get along and come to an agreement and work all together. Yes, we're gonna have our spits and stats, but we need to work together and move forward. I understand things happened in the past, things, sometimes you can't change that, but at the same time, we need to move forward and do what we need to do for this town, not as an individual, and have individual beefs, and this person said this, this person's doing that, I don't like it, this person's meeting with this other person, I don't like it. We got to work as a team. If this, if it's town business, it needs to be said in front of the town. If someone has problems with the town, bring it to the town, and we can find a resolution for it. If it's an individual beef, civil court is an orderway. Go fill out your complaint over there.
Wait, time out. It's not an order. Crowley County, because don't send them to my office. Nope. Time out. Do not do that.
Go to Crowley County and file your civil complaint there for me. That's, that's pretty much all I have to say.
And I can come up with an idea for how to do the rekeying, and which keys should be, saying which should not. I've got some background in that. I can make a proposal for everybody else to look at, 'cause I'm aware of it.
I think Cody covered it all, but I'm curious how this is gonna pan out, man. We're gonna have two different sides of this table or not? It seems that way right now.
I hope not. I make the items that I brought up for legitimate. They're not personal.
I'm talking about otherwise, so.
Okay.
Scarlet?
Read it. I'm just kidding. It's my birthday, by the way, so I spent my birthday with all of them.
What are you posting about?
Shh. Don't talk about that. Do not. Um, so I was asked, and I will acquiesce this request as a final gesture of respect. I was asked by the former, uh, town attorney to read his letter of resignation for, for the people and for the record. Um, but he did also ask, um, that your letter to him be read so that everyone understands what he's responding to, because his letter doesn't reflect it well enough.
Okay.
So this, this letter was sent to Mr. Buck, Mr. Clay Buckner, who was the former Town of Sugar City attorney on April fourth. Um, Dear Mr. Buckner, as you are aware from your electronic attendance at last, last night's meeting, I have been sworn in as the Town of Sugar City's mayor, along with six trustees. In accordance with section thirty-one dash four dash three zero one, uh, subsection one CRS, the seven of us come by, comprise the legislative and corporate authority for the Town of Sugar City. As the mayor of the Town of Sugar City, I preside at all meetings. We are aware that you were appointed to the position of town attorney by the previous board of trustees. However, we are unable to locate an ordinance whereby your duties are prescribed as required by section thirty-one dash four dash three oh four CRS. As your duties, as such, your duties are left to the board, as there is no statute defining the duties of town attorneys of statutory towns. It is left to the board of trustees of each municipality to fix and determine the character of services to be rendered and compensation to be paid. Um, and then you cited case law Kinsey v. Hoxton, um, from nineteen thirty-five. It has come to our attention that you attempted to make contact with a single board member last night on her personal cellphone. You are directed that any slash all communication pertaining and or related to matters of concern of the Town of Sugar City are to go directly through me. Um, this board of trustees has been elected to improve the ethical and legal standing of this wonderful community. Any previous directives and or policies of the previous board of trustees that permitted or allowed you to communicate directly with individuals on the board that were not shared with the entirety of the board are hereby terminated immediately. As you are aware, the board of trustees voted last night to place Davida Moreland on paid administrative leave, pending a hearing of the charges against her. As a reminder, you, you represent the Town of Sugar City, and the board of trustees of the Town of Sugar City is your boss. You report to us. You, there is a typo, so I will fix it, sorry. You are hereby directed to cease and desist from any all communication with Davida Moreland. As the town's attorney, you represent our interests and not Davida Moreland's personal interests. Any such communication would be outside of your official capacities and outside the scope of your office. Please provide me with an update on the status of the lawsuit filed against the Town of Sugar City for violations of the Open Meeting Act. In your update, please provide copy of any and all court filings, briefings, briefs, and or other communications pertaining and or relating to the lawsuit. Additionally, if I am not mistaken, you were in attendance at the executive session in question. If so, it would appear that you may have had a, you may have had a personal conflict that may professionally and ethically prohibit you from representing the Town of Sugar City. Please provide us with any and all notes, memos, recordings, or any other documentation you maintained pertaining and or relating to all executive sessions you attended for the Town of Sugar City. As you are aware, we have scheduled a hearing for Monday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Therefore, please provide us by Sunday, April seventh, two thousand twenty-four, any and all email, electronic, text, digital, or other written communication you have had directly with Davida Moreland from January one, twenty twenty-four, to the present. Additionally, if Davida Moreland has called you during that time period, please provide us with the general nature of the phone call. One of the issues we are facing is that today is payroll, and the town cannot make payroll because the town has insufficient funds. The trash fund is currently eight hundred dollars in the hole. The previous oversight and management of this town cannot continue as it has. We look forward to the timely receipt of this information. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me so that such communication may be shared with the entirety of the board of trustees. Respectfully submitted, Cindy Carley. And then his response letter, um, is dated April fifth. Dear Board of Trustees, this is my formal letter of resignation. While I had every intention of continuing to proudly represent the Town of Sugar City, on April fourth, I received an ill-conceived letter from the mayor, which gives me no choice but to resign my position as town attorney. The tone, tone and plain language of the letter makes it clear that I will not be respected and or welcome, um, member of the town staff moving forward. The letter's tone is unnecessarily confrontational, dictatorial, and exceeds any executive authority the author presupposes. The plain language casts unmerited aspersions on my legal ethics and professionalism and is tantamount to a unilateral termination, as no self-respecting professional would continue to work in such an accusatory hostile environment. The letter erroneously assumes and alleges many forms of misconduct, which I will not dignify with a response or defense. Going forward, please be advised that neither the mayor nor any other trustee has the unilateral power to reprimand and or terminate an officer of the town. The Town of Sugar City operates under a weak mayor system of government, where actions such as this letter are subject to approval by the governing body. In addition to the letter, where, what I saw at the board of trustee meetings on April third, two thousand twenty-four, was not only appalling, but in violation of the Colorado Open Meetings Law, appalling because of the unprofessional, distasteful way in which the mayor treated the town clerk. Regardless of any issues between town staff and the board, no one deserves to be treated as Ms. Moreland was, and unless rectified, the board has shown they clearly don't deserve Ms. Moreland's selfless, selfless service to this community. In violation of the COML, because the board may not take formal actions, such as notifying an officer of a termination action, without properly noticing the same. Further, the mayor again exceeded executive authority by unilaterally removing Gary Massey?
Mm-hmm.
Massey from the board without first noticing the issue, public discussion, and without calling for a vote from the government body. If properly noticed and discussed, the board could have been educated of the truth, which is Sugar City has passed four-year terms by ordinance, and that Mr. Massey is still, in fact, is sitting trustee. Sadly, all of this was completely preventable, as I was prepared to continue representing the Town of Sugar City, remaining loyal to the town's mission, vision, and goals. This board needs to take a hard look at the mayor's letter to me, her treatment of employee, employees, and her total disregard for government body. Oh, no, I, I, right, right, sorry. It is these types of actions that will create liability for the town by promoting defamation, unlawful termination, and COML violation lawsuits. Regardless of this board's trajectory, I will not lower my standards of integrity and respect for others by continuing to serve under someone that shows none. I stand by the work I did for and with the previous board, and it is with great displeasure and sadness that I am not able to continue to support the Town of Sugar City's current board. I hope the trustees have the courage to make their voice heard and vote count, oppose autocratic behavior, and do what's best for Sugar City using truth and reason. Finally, I implore the board to see the folly in treating town officers, or anyone, the way that I and others have been treated. Sugar City is better and deserves better than this. Please believe, I ha- I truly have no ill intentions intended in this letter of resignation. As is my practice, my intent is only to be candid and direct in my communications to slash with the board of trustees. I do wish you all Godspeed. Regretfully, Clayton M. Buckner. I was just asked to read those for the record, so that's all.
Granted, he advised you guys two weeks before you know you're getting out to give a three-year contract, which is not in the best interest of the town.
Well, you should have taken Stephen until the fifteenth.
At the time.
I thought we weren't doing back and forth conversations because of. I just, that's why I was like.
I'll say it. Holy shit.
Thank you, Dave.
See what everybody's thinking. That's, that's a hard one.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.